If everybody could please take their seats. Good afternoon, hello, how are you? Okay, good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the Transportation Committee meeting, a special meeting of March 29th, 2017. I'm Mike Bond, I'm the Chair of the Committee. I am joined by my colleagues, Nury Martinez of the 6th District and David Rue of the 4th District. We should be joined in short order by Mr. Weezer and Mr. Caretz. Let me give a brief overview of how we're going to do the meeting today. We are going to start today with items 11 and 12, which we will hear together. That's where the bulk of the public testimony appears to be today. And then we will get back to the other items today. I do want to give a warning in advance of any potential disruption, verbal or physical, from this meeting. Sir? I'm giving my only warning now. The next time there's any disruption, you're going to be asked to leave the meeting. So, as predicted, I am joined by Mr. Weezer and Mr. Caretz. Okay, so, let's do items 11 and 12 together.
Item 11 and 12 are, there is a joint CLA/CAO report. For item 11, it's in response to a Bloomingfield Caretz motion relative to development of a local return program for the proposed 2016 transportation ballot measure. And item number 12, the report is in response to a Busqueano Englander Wesson Bonden motion relative to dedicating at least two-thirds of the city's share of the future local return funding toward the reconstruction and rehabilitation of the city's streets that are in DNF condition.
Great. So if CAO can come up, Mr. Hirano? And just so folks have a sense how we're going to do this, we have a brief presentation from city staff, then I will take public comment, beginning with Mr. Harris Dawson, our colleague from the 8th District, and then we'll have more of a discussion. So, just to frame this a bit, the item before us today are a couple of different questions posed by different council motions about how the city should spend its portion of the local return of Measure M, which the voters approved overwhelmingly enormously to help us actually build a mass transit network here in Los Angeles and to give us the opportunity to build out a really, truly genuine multimodal system. As part of that, each city gets a certain amount of revenue back. We need to give some of it back to Metro to actually pay our share of some of the projects in our city, but then we have some pretty big latitude on how to spend it. And so, what we have here to start the discussion is a recommendation from the CAO and the CLA on how to spend that money. Mr. Hirano?
Good afternoon, thank you, Mr. Chair. Before you have a report from our two offices addressing the potential use of Measure M local return funds, as you requested in 2016, I'm joined at the table by Mr. Paul Smith of the Chief Legislative Analyst. To give you kind of an overview, the Metro estimate for the first year revenues that we have an opportunity to program would be about $56 million in the first full year. However, due to the timing of the implementation of the increase, this translates into approximately $42 million that would be available in the 2017-2018 budget for programming. The CAO and CLA report presents one recommended policy framework for the use of the funds. We're aware that there are other potential frameworks out there being discussed, and as the discussion progresses over what the most appropriate framework is, there's one major component that we'd like you to keep in mind regardless of what the ultimate framework is, and that is that the Measure M ordinance requires that the city contribute 3% to the metro regional projects as those projects move forward. The Metro staff and board have estimated that the city's share of that 3% would be approximately $490 million in overall costs, based upon 2015 estimates. We expect that those numbers will change as the projects move forward and that the number will go up. The contributions will occur most likely in clumps, as they go along with the fairly large clumps, ranging anywhere from $2 million to over $100 million, depending on the project. So, as you move forward with a policy framework for the expansion of funds, you will have to somehow contend with the requirement to do that, otherwise it would bleed over into the general fund or other funds.
So, could you just, to frame the discussion, if you could explain how you're recommending the allocation of the funding after the city makes its required 3% contribution?
Absolutely. Our offices are recommending that the city set aside two-thirds of the Measure M local return revenue for the repair of local streets and roads, specifically to address the roads that are in the worst condition. Street services in the past has called these the Ds and Fs, the roads that are not being addressed currently by the city's pavement preservation program. They're the roads that are the worst and are getting even more deteriorated by the day. And the remaining third of the Measure M local return revenue, we would suggest, be set aside for other transportation-related projects such as Vision Zero and Great Streets, anything else, transit or local transit projects, whatever else would be on the board. That's generally what our recommendation is. We would also recommend that in dealing with the 3% contributions to Metro, that we do that through the issuance of revenue bonds at the time that the obligations arrive. Otherwise, you would be required to set aside pretty much most of your money, if not all of your money, in the near term in order to save enough to make those payments.
Thank you. So, thank you for the presentation. We'll have you come back up to answer some more questions from the Committee after public comment. Just before we go to public comment, I just want to say one thing in reaction. I want to thank staff for the report and for the recommendations. I do want to note, from the very beginning, that it's a report whose recommendations I fundamentally disagree with. I think that we have a tremendous opportunity to do something very, very good in the city of Los Angeles with the Measure M local return monies. We have an opportunity to prevent people from dying. We have an opportunity to prioritize public health and safety, and we have an opportunity to prioritize equity in the city of Los Angeles, and this is a rare opportunity to do that. When I was campaigning recently, folks asked me what the most important infrastructure investments were in the city of Los Angeles, and my response was that it was implementing Vision Zero in the city of LA, because it was literally a matter of life and death. And a failure to adequately fund Vision Zero is quite literally a fatal mistake for the city, and one I think we have an opportunity to address today. So, I will be putting forth my own recommendation, which I'm going to put out there now so it can be subject to public comment and testimony, which is basically six different points. It's, the first couple are to do exactly as the CAO/CLA recommends, to pay the city's 3% contribution to Metro, but then it is to break down the funding differently, is not to focus on reconstructing streets, but to allocate 60% for Vision Zero, 10% for upgrading and expanding bicycle infrastructure, consistent with the mobility plan, 20% for median island and curb extension improvements, including curb extensions, pedestrian refuge in median islands, ball boats, and 10% to expedite sidewalk repair and reconstruction on Vision Zero high-injury network project corridors. So, I'd like us to be able to discuss both the CAO recommendation and my counterproposal as we go forward. For me, the frame on how we do this should be equity and public health and safety, and I think we have an opportunity to do that. So, we'll begin with public comment.
Mr. Chair, could I add just something briefly to you, which you said? I agree with the direction you're going in. You know, we adopted the mobility plan, which was really innovative, creative, and really set the city going in a new direction as to how we view transportation. And for us, that has to be followed up with funding now, and the recommendation I'm seeing initially does not do that. It's the same old, same old. And so, I think your proposal here, although we should discuss the allocations, is kind of in compliance with and following up on Vision Zero and mobility plan, those creative new steps that the city is taking, and we've got to fund those now, and this is a great opportunity to do that, so I agree with the direction you're going with this.
Thank you. So, we've got over 30 public comment cards. We will start first, though, as a matter of courtesy, with our colleague, Mr. Harris Dawson, from the 8th District.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair.
You've had to endure incredibly long presentations for me in homelessness and poverty committees, so you've got about an hour and a half.
Oh, thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair and members of the Committee. Firstly, we begin by thanking you and everybody in the audience who helped get Measure M passed so that we have the basis to have a conversation about an allocation of resources rather than a conversation about cutting resources here or there. The local return mechanism is a great feature for the city to address some longstanding and unfunded pursuits that we have with regard to transportation. I came by this Committee today to weigh in, in much the vein that the Chair did and Mr. Weezer did as well. Los Angeles City ranks the highest, the highest. We are number one in traffic deaths per capita of any city in the United States. Given that, I think the majority of the funding should be spent on infrastructure improvements that prevent death and serious injury on our streets. Potholes are an inconvenience, torn-up streets are an inconvenience. I know very well, I've had many a flat tire and all sorts of problems related to them. I put death, loss of human life, and serious injury above that, even given the inconvenience and trouble that they cause. All of our districts, all of our districts have had at least one person die. Most of us have had multiple people die in the first two months of this year. There's only one district that hasn't had someone die, and that district's had 16 serious injuries. In the 8th District, eight people have lost their lives in just two months due to traffic-related deaths that could be solved, and we have the science to solve, and that science is really embodied in Vision Zero. So, we believe the majority of the funding should go to implement this program that a lot of work and time has been put into layout. It also, the data on traffic deaths also shows disproportionality, like lots of data does. So, older people, people of color, low-income people that are likely to use mass transit are much more likely to be victims of serious injury and traffic deaths than other folks will be. Also, in Los Angeles County, the number-one killer, the number-one killer of young people, children, is traffic collisions. And so, we think we have a real opportunity here to have a breakthrough in the city of Los Angeles, to lead the nation and to lead California, and to showing a better way forward in, again, prioritizing human life and serious injury over other concerns. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Harris Dawson. How many chairs are there? Are there three or four?
Four.
Four? Okay. So, I'll call up four folks at a time, one minute each. Danny Cohen, David Gonzalez, I'm doing 11 and 12 together, so Dennis Hindman and Jessica Meany. Please, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Danny Cohen. I'm from the Los Fields Neighborhood Council. I'm also the Chair of that Transportation and Mobility Committee on Los Fields Neighborhood Council. The Neighborhood Council supported the mobility plan, supported Vision Zero, but I'm here of my own accord to say that funds need to be allocated insanely towards Vision Zero. It is embarrassing that there has to be a conversation about how we can help make sure that kids don't die from, you know, when going to school. So, I would urge you and beg you to really, please, make sure that that is the focus, to put the focus on something that, in this sort of world-class city, that we don't have such an embarrassing issue of having to come here and ask that, you know, kids don't get killed in the street. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Councilmembers. My name is Jessica Meany from Investing in Place. I'm also a city of LA resident who's lived by choice without a car for over 20 years, know our sidewalks, our streets, our bus stops quite well. I live in CD 13. I don't have much to say, but let's do this. So inspired by my friends and colleagues who have turned out to urge your support to put our lives first, not just the state of good repair for our cars, seeing a data-driven plan that prioritizes based on health and equity and safety and will save lives. Let's do this. We're partners here to support you, and I just want to thank you and be grateful to all of the people who are going to speak today, who took time out of their day to make our streets safe, not just for cars, but for those of us who travel in it. So, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Gonzalez?
Good afternoon, I'm David Gonzalez, Legislative Affairs Manager for VICA, the Valley Industry and Commerce Association, representing over 400 Los Angeles businesses and nonprofits. VICA strongly supports Councilman Bloomingfield's motion to equally distribute Measure M local return money among the 15 council districts. Previously, we led the Valley on Track Coalition to ensure the San Fernando Valley transit projects would be included as part of Measure M. Now, LA is expected to receive $56 million annually in local return funds, which includes $21 million annually for the San Fernando Valley. VICA urges you to support this motion that will help all areas of the city, including the San Fernando Valley, receive their fair share of local control funding for Measure M. We look forward to continue working with you to create a safe, reliable, and sustainable transportation system throughout the city of Los Angeles. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Dennis Hindman.
The number-one reason by far that voters voted for Measure M was traffic congestion, and the only two items on Measure M that can deal with that is transit and bicycling. However, bicycling is severely underfunded. Under Measure R, the city allocated what turns out to be 0.75% of the total pie to bicycling. So, when you say you're going to double that, that is 1.5%. So, if you want to achieve 1.5% bicycling, that's the way you should fund it. But if you want to go higher than that, it needs to be funded. In the Netherlands, they spent $35 per person on bicycle infrastructure, and the reason why they do that is because they have to maintain 27% bicycling, and that's what is required to do that. So, your goal should be set at what you want to achieve and how much you want to fund something.
Thank you very much. Next four speakers, Deborah Murphy, Andres Ramirez, Claudia Goitia, and Wesley Rudeman.
Good day, Councilmembers. I'm Deborah Murphy with Los Angeles Walks. We represent over 4,000 followers. We fight for safe streets, safe, accessible, fun, and equitable. I agree with the Councilmembers that have talked about the mobility plan 2035, and the Vision Zero plan is important policies that we've adopted, and that needs to direct all of our actions moving forward with our funding for our public streets. We need to prioritize safety that preserves and protects human life and encourages human interaction. Vision Zero said that we should bring all of our policies together, mobility plan, front and forward, safety, public health, access, social and economic benefits. We want that 60% of the $50 million to go towards our active transportation system. Over 260 people were killed last year in traffic fatalities. We do not want to be the deadliest city any longer. We want to make sure that our streets are the lifeblood of our communities. Let's make sure that they bring life and not take it away.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Councilmembers. My name is Andres Ramirez. I'm here on behalf of SCOPE, a nonprofit organization based in South Los Angeles. I agree with what folks have been saying. We feel that it is important that the majority of the local return goes to Vision Zero. The business, as usual, of prioritizing our cars is not working. We need to value the lives of the people, the lives that are being lost in communities like South LA, and you've got to remember that a large percentage of the workforce in South LA is dependent on the bus, on their bikes, as their form of transportation, and not their cars. And, you know, these resources are key for our communities to be able to move around the city safe and healthy. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Councilmembers. My name is Claudia Goitia. I'm the Government Relations Director for the American Heart Association. In the city of LA, we're working with various community organizations to invest in creating a culture of health. Active transportation, pedestrian safety, walkable, bikeable neighborhoods are a priority for the Heart Association, in particular to the benefits they have to increasing physical activity, reducing heart disease and stroke. So, today, I'm here on behalf of the American Heart Association to urge you to invest Measure M local return dollars to pedestrian safety, walkable neighborhoods, and biking so that we have more folks being physically active out in the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Wes Rudeman. I'm here on behalf of the Environmental Metro Coalition today. It's a group of over 30 environmental organizations working across LA County and the city of Los Angeles, and we recognize this is a huge opportunity to also tackle some of our state and local climate goals. Over 40% of greenhouse gas emissions stem, of course, from the transportation sector. Creating a Los Angeles where people can walk, bike, and use transit more safely and conveniently benefits all of us, especially at a time when the federal government is absolutely going backwards on one of the, you know, the major issues of our time. There are great opportunities, especially with Mr. Bonden's proposal. Things like median islands, curb extensions, not only can help protect and keep people safe when they're on our streets, but they can also be utilized to capture stormwater. We can plant California natives in them. They can help address urban heat island effects and do a lot of things to improve quality of life. We really hope that this final budget to show that we really value environmental health and other benefits from climate-resilient streets.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next four speakers. First name is Andrew, last name begins with a P, from Safe Routes to Schools, so just can't make out your last name. Thank you. Roxanne Rivas, Andres Cuervo, and Lindsay Nolan.
Good afternoon, thank you for the time. Andrew Pacias, Safe Routes to School National Partnership. Here to advocate that you really consider that the health and safety of students, families, communities as a whole must be an absolute top priority for the city in strategizing its local return. This is an important opportunity to uplift key existing initiatives that commit to improving safety for all Angelenos. We encourage you to consider committing a significant portion of local return to Vision Zero efforts specifically. Furthermore, we ask that you consider how leveraging local return funding to match other funding sources and support for the Safe Routes to School Action Plan, which is a key component of Vision Zero Los Angeles, presents a crucial opportunity to fulfill the plan's benchmark priorities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Honorable Members of the Transportation Committee, my name is Andres Cuervo, and I serve as the Vice President of the Palms Neighborhood Council and Chair of Transportation and Infrastructure Committee. With over 44,000 residents, Palms is one of the most diverse and dense neighborhoods in Council District 5 and all of Los Angeles. I'm here about this item today because it's been two years, two years since the senseless and preventable death of one of our residents at the crosswalk on Overland Avenue and Rose. After multiple letters and community input urging the city of Los Angeles to install a signal light in this high-traffic street, LADOT assigned this project as a Priority One. LADOT, however, continues to be at a standstill because of a lack of funding. I'm here today because as a Priority One crosswalk signal improvement on a Vision Zero high-injury street, it shouldn't take two years. I'm here today because one death is too many. I'm here today because two years of inaction is embarrassing. I strongly urge you to consider leveraging Measure M local return funding to prioritize investing in Vision Zero and projects that create complete streets. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, go ahead.
Good afternoon, my name is Roxanne Rivas, and I am here on behalf of Prevention Institute, who is a national public health nonprofit organization based out of South Los Angeles. We urge LA County to use local return dollars to reinvest in our sidewalks, crosswalks, bike lanes, and safe routes to our schools in low-income areas and communities of color. Please put the health of our people, their lives, and their safety, and their equity first. As recommended in the mobility plan of 2035 and Vision Zero projects, using an equity impact analysis report can help prioritize projects based on the communities that most need them. And also, as a resident of the northeast San Fernando Valley, I also urge you to look at that area. There are a lot of work that needs to be done in that area, and as a resident of Silmar, some streets there need a lot of work, and the safety routes to schools like Silmar High School and Oliverston Middle School need a lot of work. Thank you.
My name is Lindsay Nolan. I'm a resident of Council District 11. Today, I'm here on behalf of the LA Vision Zero Alliance. The Alliance strongly encourages you to set aside 60% of local return to fund Vision Zero. We need to prioritize investments in sidewalks, bike lanes, and other transportation infrastructure, especially in low-income communities and communities of color. Children, seniors, and people who walk and bike are most likely to die from collisions, most of which occur on the high-injury network. It's no coincidence that the high-injury network is concentrated in neighborhoods that have historically been neglected by government agencies. Our low-income neighbors and neighbors of color are six times more likely to get hit by a vehicle. Now is the time to recompense these neighborhoods, invest in their future, and prioritize the safety of their residents. Councilmembers, I encourage you to allocate 60% of local return to Vision Zero and prioritize low-income commuters and commuters of color. Thank you.
Thank you. Next four speakers are Terrence Houston, Hillary Norton, Jenny Binstock, Francois Nyon.
With the permission of the Chair, I may have to stand and sway in a moment.
I totally understand.
Excuse me. This is Elliot. In approximately 10 years, Elliot will be in the 5th grade. Whether or not he walks or bikes to school, or is driven by his mom in a minivan, is directly related to how you spend your funding today on local return Measure M. A local elementary school in my neck of the woods had a road diet installed in front of it, and the walk rate of the student body to school increased from 40 to 60%. 50% increase is a transportation planner's dream. Moms know when a street is safe to walk along. The last quick point I'd like to make is I live 1.2 miles away from the Red Line Station. It might as well be the Grand Canyon, because the streets that have been engineered in my neck of the woods, in between my home and that station, are engineered to kill people. Please help me get out of the minivan. Please help me get safe, walkable, bikeable streets to transit so that I can escape the minivan and he can bike to school. Thank you.
What's his name?
This is Elliot.
Elliot.
He's left right through it. I'm not sure. Just to drug him.
I wish you had that effect on some others. I don't want to upstage the other speakers with a baby, so I'm going to... Thank you. Hillary.
Already done.
Go ahead, Hillary.
Good afternoon, Councilmembers. My name is Hillary Norton, and I am the Executive Director of Fast Fixing Angelenos Stuck in Traffic and a resident of the 14th District. I want to thank Councilmember Weezer for his leadership in making Eagle Rock my neighborhood walkable and bikeable, because at the intersection of my street and Colorado Boulevard was one of the most heinous crashes of all time, which was the three people, including one pregnant woman, who crashed into a tree right at the end of our street, two houses away from us. After installing those crosswalks and bike lanes and having our neighborhood changed to require no parking regulations in order to open a new business, we have changed the dynamic of our neighborhood, and so, we want to see more of that happen. As a member of the Vision Zero Alliance, we support this motion because we are not talking about not paving, we are talking about paving where safety first, leverage best, new data to address new mobility, and asphalt and heat equals danger. We need to redesign our studies, reprioritize our funds, and make it easier for people to walk, bike, and yes, sometimes even go in a vehicle by not having it be a deadly activity. Thank you very much.
Jenny?
Hi, I'm Jenny Binstock. I work with three people. I live in CD 1. I don't have a baby with me today, unfortunately. I'm here to reinforce that we can't prioritize safety and equity in public health if we're not explicitly talking about climate change. The communities that have the greatest safety and mobility needs, so older Angelinos, communities of color, low-income communities, and youth, are the same communities that will be forced to bear the most extreme impacts of climate change. So the $50 million from local return is a really amazing opportunity for supporting the city's air quality and urban heat island and public health and stormwater goals, which are critically aligned with our mobility and safety and quality of life goals. And in a time where we're losing our tree canopy because of sidewalk repairs, it's a great opportunity to look at how we can leverage those funds to expand canopy, which is urgently needed to protect folks from extreme heat. So I'm here to ask that you look at opportunities to integrate all these strategies really meaningfully. And yes, that's Vision Zero. And yes, it's fixing our sidewalks, but it's also climate change.
Francois.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Francois Nion, without front de co. We are in full support of the better sidewalks and accessible bus zone for transit riders. You know, as we know, in fact, there is 75% of people using public transportation in Los Angeles are using buses. So that's very significant. So we have an existing partnership with the city for the bus shelters. So we think it's a great opportunity to expand and to provide better place for transit riders. We think that accessing the bus zone and investing in more complete street can help the city achieve their goals through the Mobility Plan for 2035 and then the Vision Zero. So we are very happy to help. This is a great opportunity to engage the community and leverage Measure M return funding to think about our streets, to work together toward better bus stop and safer bus stop where people need the most. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Next four speakers, I believe it's Melinda Arnado, Eric Valiente, Anisha Hingerani, and Tamika Butler.
My name is Melinda Mato, and I'm the Organizing Director of the L.A. Bike Coalition, or LACBC. At LACBC, we would like to advocate that the city consider the following priorities. One, dedicate more funding to Vision Zero. The city should set aside 60% of its local return to support its Vision Zero network. People walking and biking are at a disproportionate risk of being killed from traffic violence. Two, resume commitment to bike lane installation. A portion of local return funds should be used to install high-priority bike lanes. Three, prioritize low-income communities and communities of color. There is a historical and continual lack of investment in low-income communities and communities of color by government agencies. Local return dollars and Vision Zero are opportunities to prioritize low-income communities and communities of color that have been historically neglected. Four, commit to data transparency. Data collection is essential to understanding traffic deaths and holding public agencies accountable. Five, promote meaningful community engagement. The city must invest in robust, culturally competent, and linguistically appropriate community engagement. Please ensure that active transportation, safety, and equity are prioritized in spending Measure M local return dollars.
Thank you.
My name is Eric Valiente, and I'm the founder and executive director of Blacklist L.A. We are committed to, we're an organization committed to keeping people healthy and active in the city of Los Angeles by connecting them to community art and running. And we see about 500 runners a week, and too often do our runners trip and fall over sidewalks, unlit streets. So we're just here to support and recommend that the majority of the funds go to Measure M so we can have safer streets to exercise in. We just want to stay active in the city of L.A., and I think it's embarrassing that we constantly see people trip and fall, and we have to keep an injury log of how many people are being affected by unsafe streets. And also by, you know, I'm born and raised in Los Angeles. This is the first time I'm doing this, so I think it should say a lot for me to feel so compelled to show up here and kind of represent the organization and all the runners that we see throughout the week to support safer streets for everyone, especially people that are trying to stay active as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name's Anisha Hingerani. I'm the Program and Policy Manager at Multicultural Communities for Mobility. MCM organizes for safe and accessible transportation for folks that rely on walking, biking, and taking public transportation. We are also a proud member of the Vision Zero Alliance and a co-chair of the Enforcement Work Group with Advancement Project. Communities of color and low-income families live in neighborhoods that lack safe street designs like lighting, signals, crosswalks, sidewalks, and bike lanes. These conditions create situations where community members, especially children and older adults, are more likely to suffer from serious and fatal traffic collisions. And at the same time, residents are more likely to experience harassment and overpolicing by law enforcement. Our city's leaders have an opportunity to right this wrong by prioritizing infrastructure investments through Measure M local return funding to create a culture of safety for pedestrians and cyclists in the areas that need it the most. So we are urging the committee to ensure that significant funding from Measure M local return is used for lifesaving engineering projects in the heavily impacted and historically divested neighborhoods of L.A. Thank you.
Thank you. Tamika.
Good afternoon. My name is Tamika Butler, and I'm the Executive Director of the Los Angeles County Bicycle Coalition and a member of the Vision Zero Alliance. I want to thank the Transportation Committee and, in particular, Councilmember Bonin for your proposal. Thank Councilmember Marquis Harris-Dawson for being here today. My staff at the Bike Coalition knows, I always say to them, there's no such thing as a bike emergency. If you have a family emergency, if someone's sick, if someone you love is in trouble, there's no such thing as a bike emergency. But today, we're here because there are bike emergencies. There are emergencies for folks in the city who are trying to walk and bike and keep dying. And it's not okay. And we really, really strongly suggest that local return money be used to go towards Vision Zero. As a black queer woman, my people have been subject to racism, they have been subject to hate, they have been subject to so much, and we're out here dying in these streets because there is not an investment, an investment in protecting us, particularly in low-income communities of color. And so, we ask that you use an equity lens to protect our neighbors who need us most and often lack a voice. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next four speakers are Adriana Mendoza, Jenny Chamberlain, Annalou Fernandini,
Hello. Good afternoon. My name is Adriana Mendoza, and I'm the Associate State Director for AARP in California. On behalf of our 700,000 AARP members in L.A. County, thank you for this opportunity. Last year, our organization advanced for and mobilized our members in the greater L.A. area to support the passage of Measure M. Accessible, safe streets are extremely important to our 50-plus community members who want transportation and mobility options for physical activity and for access to support and services. Transportation is a vital link connecting people of all ages to their communities if it enables them to live healthy, active lives. In California, adults 65 and older comprise almost a quarter of pedestrian fatalities, making the state second in the nation in the deaths of older pedestrians. Because of the work that Vision Zero is doing to make streets safe and more accessible for people of all ages, we support allocating local return funds for Vision Zero. Thank you.
Jenny?
My name is Jenny Chamberlain. I'm here for Friends of King, the parent group of Thomas Star King Middle School, which educates 2,000 LAC's middle schoolers. I strongly encourage you to consider leveraging local return to prioritize sidewalks, bike lanes, safety, and investing in historically disadvantaged neighborhoods that could use this funding the most. Dangerous conditions around our school have led traffic safety to be the number-one priority for both the administration and the parent group. We have over 1,000 personal vehicles drive to school every morning, largely because parents find it too unsafe for their middle schoolers to walk. The same parents who allowed their elementary school students to walk where there were traffic calming measures in place, and they're now older kids are not allowed to walk. And this is because every year, students, our students are hit in the crosswalk in front of our school. One was left with a severe and permanent traumatic brain injury. I'm in strong support of local return investment that promotes safe, more walkable, accessible, greener streets for people of all ages and encourages active transportation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Annalou Fernandini, and I am a volunteer for the Heart Association. I am here as a volunteer to respectfully urge you to please prioritize investing Measure M local return dollars to fund projects that will improve walking and biking routes for people to go to work, to go to school, in the city of Los Angeles. Prioritizing funding for these areas will help increase physical activity, reduce rates of deaths due to vehicle collisions, and improve the quality of life for vulnerable communities in Los Angeles. I supported Measure M in November specifically because I hope it will help fund the overlooked street and sidewalk repairs throughout L.A. County. Nearly 80% of U.S. adults and 75% of adolescents do not currently get the recommended amount of physical activity each week. Studies show that more and better quality sidewalks are associated with higher rates of walking and more adults meeting their daily physical activity recommendations. Healthier communities are happier communities.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Joe Viana, West L.A., CD 11. And I'm a PhD candidate at UCLA in health policy. And I focus on children's health, and I'm here today because myself and my colleagues are realizing that we need a huge shift in our strategy, that policies outside of healthcare affect the development and health and well-being of our kids in a way that we just can't fix in the clinic. And I came here to beat on my drum, but I'm getting the sense that I don't have to, and I appreciate you all for making that clear. So I'll jump straight to my ask, and that has to do with data. I'm too accustomed to counting accidents, to counting deaths, to counting kids with chronic disease. I want to count investments. And so, I asked the committee to consider collaborating with the mayor's Open Data Team. It's an award-winning team, hugely talented, people I've met with. We want to see where these investments are going and what projects are being funded, and that's the surest way to make that data available to us. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, there's 10 more cards. Next four, Keenan Sheedy, Luis Gutierrez, Lilibeth Navarro, Nicole Wong. Please, go ahead. We'll just go right to the last one.
Hi, my name is Luis Gutierrez. I work for Leadership for Urban Renewal Network, aka LEARN, a community and economic development nonprofit organization based in Boyle Heights. I'm here today to encourage you to leverage social return funding to prioritize important infrastructure such as sidewalks in disadvantaged neighborhoods and to use data to prioritize our most dangerous streets and sidewalks. For years, LEARN has been working to legalize street bending in L.A. city. Recently, we have taken solid steps forwards on this effort, but to make sure that we eventually have a comprehensive system that works for everyone, we need to make sure that our streets and sidewalks are safe and in great shape. Your decision today can help us get there. Thank you.
Good afternoon, members of the Transportation Committee. My name is Lilibeth Navarro, and I'm the Executive Director of Calife. It's an independent living center serving the central L.A. area of 50 zip codes. I would like to, we are also a coalition member of Vision Zero, and we'd like to encourage you to invest some of the Measure M dollars, especially to sidewalks. It's all about accessibility for us and compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act. There are many people with disabilities who die on the streets because we, most of us on wheelchairs, we sit low, we're barely visible, and it doesn't matter even if we had the most accessible home. If out the door, we can't even access the streets and go to the bus stop and travel, participation in the mainstream doesn't happen. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Keenan Sheedy, District 1, Northeast Los Angeles, a member of the Royal Circle Neighborhood Council Board, Chair of the Transportation Committee. Our focus is on pedestrian safety. I'm also a member of the Environmental Justice Action Team of SCIU Local 721. And I work at LAC USC Medical Center, and every day, we see the consequences of the lack of safety and lack of protection of our own children and our pedestrians and our seniors and our disabled. We see it every day. We see the carnage. So we need to put a stop to it. There's a public health benefit to encouraging walking. Many studies have shown that heart disease, diabetes, many ailments can be fought and prevented by walking, making our communities more walkable. Also, I've worked very hard for Measure M, to pass Measure M. The fact is that it is a regressive tax, and it's only just that we focus on low-income communities to help solve the problems that have been neglected for too long. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, community members. My name's Nicole Wong. I'm here representing Redeemer Community Partnership. We're a nonprofit that has been working in South L.A. to create safe, healthy, opportunity-rich community for children and their families. And I'm also a resident in Council District 8. Walking and biking are essential modes of transportation in South L.A., and not just for recreation or exercise, but for everyday life. People in my neighborhood use it for doing laundry, taking their kids to school, running errands, doing groceries. I want to share about a woman, a single mom in my community named Ophelia. About a year and a half ago, she was crossing a major corridor to do laundry, the same laundromat I go to. And as she was crossing this crosswalk, she was struck by a speeding truck. Her femur was broken, and it was just a significant burden to her for six months. She had to think about where to take her kids to school, or who could take them, providing meals, getting transportation to the hospital, and the emotional trauma of the incident still haunts her. In a community that's already burdened with so many environmental factors, people can't afford to be seriously injured or killed. And so, I think it's imperative that Measure M funding go towards investments to communities that have been long overlooked and are currently overburdened by several adverse environmental health and safety factors. Thank you.
Thank you. Next four speakers, Tam Tran, Georgina Serrano, Karo Haraghi, and Jeff Jacoberger.
Hello. My name is Tam Tran. I'm a resident of Council District 10, and I'm also a volunteer at Redeemer Community Partnership. Just a day before this meeting, my roommate Kevin, who couldn't be here because of work, got struck by a car while biking on Adams in Normandy. Another friend of mine who lives in the neighborhood, Cory, was involved in a biking accident because of the lack of a bike lane, and that caused the car to come too close to him. Safety is not something that I feel when walking or biking in our neighborhood because of the current infrastructures. There are so many potholes in the streets. The lack of bike lanes make the roads unsafe for people on bikes. Sidewalks are broken and not accessible for people in wheelchairs. I'm really thankful that Kevin and Cory only got mild injuries from their accidents and it was not life-threatening, but I'm sure many others have been in life-threatening situations, and many more accidents go unreported. We need to take action so people's lives are not at risk for simply biking in our neighborhood. And for all these reasons, I support Vision Zero and hope that the investment goes towards there.
Thank you.
I'm honored to be here. Thank you. My name is Georgina Serrano. I'm the membership organizer of Trust of the Late. Tenemos que reclamar y unidos salvar la tierra. So I've worked in the district now for the past five years. And actively, as you see, we invited the people to bike and walk. And I see moms with pickup children for the elementary school use a truck for pickup the children because the streets are so unsafe for walk-on. So really, attending the Vision Zero meetings and cannot see any teenager in the meeting. So my encouragement is, please create the space for the youth people with the cellphones in their hands, be part of Vision Zero in the meetings, and continue and beautify, put them más bonitas, put it beautiful, and repair our sidewalks. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Thank you, honorable Transportation Committee members. My name is Karo, and I'm here with California Walks. We are a statewide nonprofit working on pedestrian safety. And I just wanted to let you know that during the next six months, California Walks will actually be offering the City of L.A. technical assistance to support Vision Zero efforts due to the City of L.A.'s focused cities designation that is designated by the Federal Highway Administration due to the city's high pet and bike collision. So you will all be happy to know that L.A. DOT and LAPD are already working with us. And like everyone who spoke before me, California Walks also encourages you all to consider leveraging Measure M funds to prioritize sidewalks, bike lanes, safety, and investing in historically disinvested neighborhoods. Thank you.
Jeff?
Great. Good afternoon. I'm Jeff Jacoberger, Legislative Deputy for Councilmember Bob Blumentfeld, who represents Council District 3 in the west San Fernando Valley. He asked me to thank you for all of your hard work in figuring out how to spend a small amount of money on enormous, enormous needs. Councilmember Blumentfeld believes that first and foremost in deciding how to spend local return funding, the city should keep the promises that it made that it return funding, the city should keep the promises that it made, that it and Metro made to voters, and a key promise was that local return funding, local return funds would mean funding for local projects. Metro broke that down for every city in Los Angeles County and parts of cities, including Los Angeles by subregion. Each council district in Los Angeles has more people than 86 of the 88 cities in Los Angeles County. Thus, the principle that local return equals local project supports allocating money on a geographic basis, so that people in all parts of the city see local projects that their tax dollars support. The councilmember understands that the importance of equity and fairness, that local return is explicitly not based on equity but on population. San Marino gets money on the same basis as San Fernando, Hermosa Beach gets money on the same basis as Hawaiian Gardens. And whatever substantive matters the city decides to prioritize, every part of the city has more than enough projects and needs to spend the available funds. I think for the councilmember Blumentfeld, you know, one of his concerns is there's a misconception about his district. People drive through on the 101 and go through Tarzana and Woodland Hills and sort of ignore the fact that the rest of the district is working-class communities of Canoga Park, Winnetka, and Reseda. He'd add that Woodland Hills contains the Warner Center, which has a specific plan that significantly upzoned the area served by the Orange Line, and that plan had and has broad community support, in part because of the promise that along with development would come a more multimodal transportation system. Fairness also demands keeping the city's promise to the areas that are doing more than their part to accommodate the need for growth in Los Angeles. On a final note, the CAO and CLA report indicates that it is too hard to perform a retroactive accounting of where local return money has been spent. Even if that is true, the city needs to prospectively track where money is spent and conduct a periodic true-up to assess whether all parts of the city are seeing benefits from local return funding and to demonstrate to all Angelenos that Metro and the city are keeping the promises they made to voters. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff. My apologies, Jeff. If I'd seen your card earlier, I would have had you speak after Mr. Harris Dawson.
I enjoyed hearing all the comments. Thank you.
I have two more speakers on this, Mr. Herman and Louis.
I'll tell you what I think about Measure M. Fuck Measure M and all those fucking bonds you promised us to fix the infrastructure of our streets and sidewalks. Willets versus Los Angeles, Bardin versus Sacramento, fix our goddamn fucking streets so we don't have to have a hit-and-run or slip-and-fall in the City of Los Angeles. There was, there was a case this morning, a slip-and-fall in City Hall, but yet no one listens to the public. That's why it's that rate, and then you let this stupid schmuck motherfucker run over two minutes, and the rest of us have to be segregated to 60 seconds. You fucking racist discriminatory piece of shits. Allow people to be heard, and the reason why I have to exercise my vulgarity this way is because none of you listen, and it makes it more humorous and hilarious when I get to say fuck you to your face without feeling upset about it, because it's not personal. I'm not like Herb Wilson, an angry white Uncle Tom who tells L.L. Johnson to take me out.
Go ahead, sir.
My name is Louis McAlpine Payne. I'm here for the cities of Los Angeles. It's a goddamn shame we can pay Starbucks millions and millions of dollars for Steam. Why don't we get the fucking goddamn education and the books and go back to the Steam shovels? You oppose $38 million for lights. Why don't you burn candles and go back to the horses? Grandma done it, and why can't you? I agree with District 5. He ran the green light district. He had no opposals. He had a professor from Cal State University. She has been a professor for 62 damn years of her life, and she don't give a goddamn shit about this city. And if no one told you they loved you, I do, so stop killing your people.
Thank you. All right, if we could have CAO, CLA, and DOT, Ms. Reynolds, come up to the table. While they're doing so, let me thank all of the, well, almost all of the members who came out to testify in public comment today. This is one of the largest turnouts from the public we've had at a Transportation Committee meeting, maybe on taxi issues. We might have had something similar, but this is one of the most diverse grassroots crowds from around the city that we've seen at this committee, and it's good to see. Please keep coming back. We're here every two weeks, more or less. So let me start with a couple questions to the city agencies. Let me ask Mr. Herman off the bat. The city has a history and a practice of taking, some might say raiding, but we'll use the word taking, transportation funds, special funds for the purposes of resurfacing our streets. We've done it with, I think, Proposition C, and we've done it with the Measure R local return. What was the thinking and the rationale behind doing that again with Measure M?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You're correct. We've done that with, we've taken Prop C, Measure R, and gas tax to address the pavement preservation program, which is primarily resurfacing, slurry seal, and some pothole filling, but what has been ignored in the process are the majorly failed streets, the ones that require full reconstruction or some component require full reconstruction. They're the most expensive to do, and they're the ones most in need of repair. And so what we found out back in 2014 was that we have about a $4 billion deferred maintenance liability associated with those roads, and as those roads are not addressed, that liability just grows. So the rationale behind making a recommendation to put Measure M monies towards that stemmed from the recognition that we needed to make progress on reducing that overall liability. In addition, the repair of a roadway is more than just the repair of a roadway for a vehicle. The repair of a roadway actually offers several benefits and opportunities by itself. It promotes public safety. It promotes economic development in a community, a community that has well-built and nicely-maintained roads, is much more attractive of a community to move into or to do business in or to live in, but it also provides an opportunity for us from a construction standpoint. Under your leadership, we recently approved the Willet settlement, which allows us, or requires us, and allows us the opportunity to address sidewalk repair in a major way in the city. Before you, also in another committee is a, are a couple of reports, one from our office and one from the Bureau of Sanitation, addressing legal requirements on stormwater. Among those is a pretty hefty requirement to do green street elements, and this, this report would provide an opportunity to combine a lot of those types of projects into one and deliver a refreshed infrastructure into a community.
So we've, we've got about, according to SOS LA, which was sort of the definitive assessment of where we are on DNF, we have nearly $4 billion in need for reconstructing the DNF streets. Is that correct?
Correct.
So with a two-thirds allocation of what we anticipate for Measure M local return, my back of the envelope tells me that's about $37 million annually.
Correct.
So that would take us over 100 years to do those DNF streets, assuming no more DNF streets came on board.
Did you do that math? We didn't do it. It's a big number.
It's a big number. To me, that says we don't make much of an impact annually.
It is a number that exceeds the life of a street, for sure.
Yeah.
However, I, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, one of the things that we did when we made the recommendations, we had exactly this conversation with the Bureau of Street Services, Mr. Sossetta, and it was his opinion, if I heard it correctly, that make, repairing any failed street brings up the overall condition of the street system and makes headway. So while this proposal does not go as far as the SOS LA proposal did, which would have proposed to repair all the failed streets within 15 years, they were very clear that any repair of failed streets at any level would make an improvement in the overall system, and so that's why this recommendation was wrong.
Well, let me do a little of my math, a little bit more of it, because...
The Street Service is here if you'd like to talk to them.
If, if we're talking about a 104-year program to do this, to me, that says we're not doing a lot every year, and what that comes out to is approximately 24 centerline miles of streets per year. That's about 1 and 1/2 miles per council district per year. That's the benefit of this, 1 and 1/2 miles per council district per year. On the other hand, you know, as policymakers, we sort of weigh different things. What we've heard when this body, this committee and this council approved Vision Zero as a policy statement is that people are dying, is that 200 or more every year, last year I think there were 260. If we multiply 260 lives per year by 104, we've saved 26,000 lives.
Yeah.
So we can either fill a bunch of potholes, reconstruct a bunch of streets, or we can save a bunch of lives, and for me, I'm, I'm far more interested in making sure that our streets aren't filled with dead bodies than I am that they're filled with potholes, and I think that's a bit of the, the policy choice that, that we're facing here. So I want to pivot and, and ask Ms. Reynolds, who's been the, the architect of Vision Zero, to remind us a bit or, or tell us a bit about what we can deliver alternatively by investing in Vision Zero. We know that, you know, as Mr. Harris Dawson reminded us, one of the leading causes of death of, of young people in Los Angeles is traffic fatalities. We heard from folks from AARP who reminded us that older adults disproportionately are the victims of traffic fatalities. My notes tell me that 11% of our population are, are seniors, and they're 26% of the fatalities. Can you tell me a little bit about what sort of return on investment we would get if we were to put 60% into Vision Zero?
So, thank you for the opportunity, and I think it's worth noting that year-to-date in 2017, we've already experienced a 71% increase in pedestrian deaths over 2016, and 2016 was a 35% increase over 2015. So the number of crashes is holding constant, but the number of deaths is increasing, which means that when a crash occurs, the likelihood of a severe or fatal outcome is significant, and each one of those has a cost. Each one of those fatalities represents $1.4 million. Each one of the severe crashes represents $1 million in cost. The city delivers significant liability payouts for these crashes as well, and over 90% of the payouts that we were able to track occur on or near the high-injury network. So there's a cost, there's a strong moral and ethical argument for investing in reducing deaths, there's an equity argument, but there's also a very sound financial argument. What we calculated by focusing on low-cost, high-effectiveness implementations, like the scramble that we put in on Hollywood and Highland that has reduced injuries and fatalities to zero over the last year and a half, we're able to touch almost 80 or 90 miles of streets with about $13 million. So, you know, what we anticipate is that over time, we have a program that addresses signals citywide, tier one and tier two and tier three signals citywide, and that we address the, the high-injury network. First wave is low-cost, high-return infrastructure, and the second wave, in future years, we're able to come back and make those improvements concrete. So I think in terms of how far your dollar goes, that, that's, that's a little bit of a, of a sense of, you know, you're going to pay now or you're going to pay later. So you can invest in common sense improvements to bring those numbers down, or you're going to pay societally and budgetarily on the other end.
How does Los Angeles's investment in pedestrian safety and reducing traffic fatalities in Vision Zero compare with other cities like New York, for instance?
So in this current annual budget, the City of New York is investing $115 million for Vision Zero and $59 million for Safe Routes to School. It's a $2.5 billion investment in Vision Zero over the next 10 years.
And we're investing, if we don't do this, what are we investing?
So the, the current budget has $2 million for capital, $1 million for education, which is actually outside money, grants that we brought in, and half a million dollars for outreach.
So 3 million compared to 174 million.
It's about the size of it.
That's pretty telling. So while we may have been neglecting DNF streets, we've been neglecting this even more. And just for comparison's sake, do you know offhand how the number of traffic-related deaths compared to the number of gang-related homicides in Los Angeles?
So the last two years that we've been tracking it, traffic-related fatalities have outstripped gang-related homicides, and, and we make that comparison not to diminish gang-related homicides, but to point out the outrage that we all share around those, around that issue, and that they should be commensurate. We should be thinking about both of those things in the same way with a level of, of an approach that it's unacceptable for a city like Los Angeles.
Absolutely. So under the funding of Vision Zero that, that we've discussed and that I sort of laid out, talking about traffic signals, high-injury network, project implementation, safety awareness and engagement, Vision Zero planning and design, remind us how data is used to make the determinations of where Vision Zero money is spent?
So what we did is look at five years of data on severe and fatal crashes for everybody, you know, drivers, people, no matter how they travel. We map those, and we look for trends, because there's a certain randomness to where fatalities occur unless you look at the trend, because the trend holds, and when we've tracked the, the severe and fatal crashes, the uptick in them, they've remained on or near the high-injury network that we already identified, so we feel confident in the data. The second thing we do is a detailed analysis of why it happened. What were the factors that led to that outcome? And then we do a detailed connection between why it happened and proven investments in infrastructure that can reduce or eliminate the, the cause of the crash. So these are not, we're not, this is not a randomly generated bunch of ideas. It, it is very much grounded in where things are happening, who they're impacting, why they're happening, and proven solutions that are cost-effective for us to invest. And so that's what we're doing right now as a department, is we have, we've pulled people from all over the department to engage in this kind of workshop environment, to look at the data and to come up with the solutions, and then, you know, that's the science part. The art is going out and working with the community to come up with a solution that people can feel really good at, about.
So let me talk a little bit more, I just have a couple more questions, colleagues.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I don't want to interrupt you, but I've been sitting through this entire meeting as Mr. Herman has been making wild gestures, snorting, doing all kinds of distracting things, and I'm just too distracted not to mention that he's disrupted this meeting.
Mr. Herman, one more distraction either that I noticed or that any of my colleagues noticed, and I'm asking you to leave. Final warning.
Ask me what?
Okay, that was it. Please escort Mr. Herman out.
For what, Herman? For what, Herman? I honestly don't trust my fucking shit. Fucking Bond, fucking Baguette, God, Bond, he just don't want me to participate. I'll make it up to fucking Rose and Watt now, you pig. Fucking Corret, fucking Julie, people of their homes, not kicking me out when I'm reporting, fat ass.
My apologies to the audience, those who are unaccustomed to what we sort of get with some of the public comment here, yet another reason why I invite you all to come more often and help us elevate the dialogue, please. So let me, just a final couple of questions. So, let me, just a final couple of questions, and I'll turn it over to the rest of the council, the colleagues, about the science aspect of it. Because the data has shown us certain things. It's shown us that the, over half of the streets in the high-injury network are neighborhoods with larger-than-usual percentages of children, of seniors, of immigrants, people with disabilities, people of low income, people of color. What does that tell us about our historical investments or lack of them?
Well, I think that, you know, nationwide, there are people of color and low-income folks are overrepresented as victims of traffic crashes. And, you know, without getting too deep into speculation, I would hazard that it has a lot to do with the way that the interstate highway system was originally laid out, and that it cut off and isolated communities, and then, and cut them off and isolated them from investment, and also put them in the path of other negative public health outcomes from being near, you know, large volumes of vehicles emitting. So, there's, you know, they're in communities where we've got a lot of kids with asthma, we've got a lot of kids with diabetes, these are the same neighborhoods. And it has to do with a historic sort of approach to transportation that was around the primacy of the automobile and around the interstate highway system, and around, then what followed was historic disinvestment in those neighborhoods, because they became cut off economically, they became cut off socially, they became cut off politically, they became disenfranchised. And so, they didn't get in line, and they didn't get the funding that other parts of the city may have received.
So, the data-based approach of Vision Zero allows us to address that inequity through an equitable, data-driven approach?
There are inherent inequities where people are being injured and killed today.
And there has been some sentiment, one of the motions before us today is divide by 15, make sure there's an equal distribution among council districts. Clearly, the data shows the high-injury network isn't equally distributed through the council districts. But there's always going to be a concern with elected officials that their districts get something. Can you speak to the fact that by doing traffic signals, Safe Routes to School, curb extensions, median refuge islands, that there actually is things in here that would both address the high-injury network and provide for every part of the city?
I think, first of all, the high-injury network does touch every district in this city. There is something in every single, sadly, there is something, no part of the city is immune. So, first and foremost, you know, the corridors that we focus on this year are the ones that represent the largest share of the severe and fatal crashes, the worst of the worst. But over time, as we work through the rest of the network, we're going to be in every neighborhood in Los Angeles. But once you get, you sort of set that work plan aside, and you look at the work plan for signals, which are divided into Tier 1, 2, and 3 based on a set of criteria that we have, again, those are distributed much more evenly throughout the city, and they're based on constituent requests, and they come from a combination of identified needs by the department and requests from neighborhoods. And so, that is absolutely part of the program. They're clearly safety-related, where, you know, constituents and neighborhoods and citizens can put forward their ideas and have them be responded to by the department. We have not historically had a stable revenue stream for traffic signals, and so, we have a big backlog of about $20 million just in Tier 1, all over the city. Safe Routes to School is the same thing. We have our top 50 schools. Those touch a lot of different neighborhoods in the city, and as soon as we get through those, we're going to go to the next 50, and we're going to go to the next 50. That's what having a stable revenue stream allows you to do, is to go through the entire city in an organized way. Otherwise, we're going to keep treading water and just try to get to those top 50, and that's going to take us a really long time.
Thanks. And just to put a fine point on it, when we discuss Vision Zero, both in what I've talked about and what you're talking about, we're talking about the various "is," but not the enforcement "e." We're talking about the engineering, the engagement, the education. The enforcement, LAPD's got more than enough money to do their bit. So, Ms. Martinez?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This seems to me like it's a very generic recommendation, and I would like to know, why didn't the report show a different percentage breakdown of the funding so that it can create more opportunities to fund other projects?
Thank you for the question, council member. The intent was to provide an overall framework and not to get lost in a lot of the details. You know, I think one of the things that I like to emphasize is, it sounds to me like the way this conversation is shaping up, it's an either-or situation. But the CIO and CLA report is not ignorant or unsupportive of Vision Zero or Great Streets or any of the other important programs we have. It strives to establish a balance in addressing all the different needs. And that's a very encouraging discussion that we're having here today, to discover what that right balance is. But we just, we put the recommendation together to give you a general framework, and then we were hoping that you would provide instruction to the staff to come back with the details that could be further debated.
So, I'm trying to just follow your rationale, because given that my district has far less D and F streets, how do then, how do then, do I ensure that my district gets an equitable distribution of funds?
I don't, I'm not sure where you got the information that you have less DNF streets.
In comparison to other parts of the city, I do.
Okay.
I have DNF streets. I know what they look like. I live there.
Yeah.
But what I'm trying to say is, in comparison to other parts of the city, I do have fewer than, say, the, you know, maybe the eastern or southern part of the city. So, then, how do I, how do then, am I, under your formula, can I be assured that I get equitable distribution of funds if another district has a longer road to reconstruct?
So, I think the answer to that question is really in the way the Street Services approaches street repair with all of you. The way they approach the payment preservation program is they try to equitably distribute the funds every year to each council district, and they come in, they meet with you, and suggest roads, and you have an opportunity to make adjustments to that. But our understanding was that that process would be mimicked with the failed streets as well, and that that might actually be one conversation, because failed streets and streets are at B or C level, are right next to each other, and sometimes it makes sense to work on them both at once. So, that was our understanding, is that Street Services would continue its existing practice, and that that practice equitably distributes the work and the funding throughout the city in each council district.
And do you know what the status is of SB 1, which is, I think, someone to impose the gas tax and the increase in vehicle license fee?
Correct. SB 1 and AB 1, the state level, both contemplate an increase in gas tax, among other fees. And my understanding is, the governor has asked the state legislature to try and conference and come up with a joint bill that they can push forward together. The governor has asked them to do so sometime early in April.
It could also help local governments pay for transportation projects and resurfacing as well.
Both SB 1 and AB 1 are drafted that way. I'm assuming that a joint bill that would consolidate those two as well, but we have yet to see what that looks like. My understanding is that might be available in the first half of April.
Governor Brown and Speaker DeLion are now making an announcement about it, started at 2:00. And so, my understanding is that
You better.
They have a package. It prioritizes road reconstruction. It has some money in it for transit and biking and walking, but would, that is a very, I don't know how to overstate how big of a deal it is
It's a big deal.
That they were, that they're even making an announcement. It signals that the legislature may actually be ready to do something.
Good. And so, Mr. Chair, every time we have these conversations about, you know, making sure that folks get their fair share, we talk about being equitable, it almost feels like we're, you know, underserved communities are constantly having to plead and beg for the bare necessities to, you know, for what people take for granted, like walking their kids to school, or walking to work, or taking a bike, not because it's leisurely, but because that's their only mode of transportation. We always find ourselves in this, in this situation where we're begging and pleading for our communities to finally become whole, and it's frustrating. All communities need resurfacing. I'm not saying and suggesting that we don't. I have DNF streets, but I have communities in my district that don't even have the bare necessities, a sidewalk, a safe crosswalk, a traffic signal. You know, these are things that perhaps other communities get to, perhaps we got to them first, but we have communities that we've never gotten to. And so, when we are fighting for our share of the pie, we're simply saying, we want to be able to walk our kids to school safely without dying. And, you know, the formula that you present to me right now, sir, is not something I can support. I have to go back and ensure that my kids and my families can walk to school safely, and people who are transit-dependent can get to the bus, or can ride on their bike, and not think of having to, you know, think of dying, unfortunately. That's what so many of our communities have to face. So, I want to look at a different way of approaching this local return, and really think about how do we make communities whole again, and stop this bickering about, you know, the haves and the have-nots. I take this very seriously, but let me tell you something. Some of these communities, we have never, ever gotten to, and it's been over 40 years that some of these communities have been forgotten. And every time we talk about equity, being equitable and being fair, these communities continue to be left behind, and I am not going to allow that to happen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Few questions and comments, but the first one is, you mentioned the, our department head who's not listening is the question that this is addressed to.
Dave.
So, you mentioned that there was a substantial increase in pedestrian deaths in the last couple of years. I think before we start allocating money, we need to know, why would we have suddenly a substantial increase? What changed? The same dangerous conditions that were there before, I'm sure were there during this period. So, how did we get that massive increase? Have we analyzed that and figured that out?
So, there are four main reasons. The first reason is, people are driving more because gas is cheap. The second reason is, people are driving more because the economy is back. So, an increase in vehicle miles traveled always correlates with an increase in severe and fatal crashes. So, what I would frame it as is, you had a dangerous situation, you had a powder keg, or you had a stick of dynamite, and you added five sticks of dynamite to it, because you massively increased the actual amount of conflicts that were occurring, which increased with the amount of driving. The third reason, anecdotally, which has not been demonstrated or proven by any study in transportation, I've learned a long time ago never to trust anecdotal data, but anecdotally, there are more and more distractions inside a vehicle. People have their smartphones, they have entertainment technology navigation packages that are actually in the vehicles. So, that's a contributing factor, no question. But there are, a lot of our peer cities, New York is one of them, that's experienced the lowest incidence of pedestrian fatalities in the last 50 years. New York drivers don't have any less or any more distractions in their vehicles than Angelenos do. So, you know, it's not, that's not something that we can't overcome, but it's certainly a consideration. And the last reason is really that, you know, the city is growing and more people are walking. So, there are more people walking and biking on our streets, and again, when you have an increase in any mode of travel, you have an increase in crashes. Underpinning all four of those, though, is speed, right? So, if you have the number of crashes holding constant, but the number of deaths is increasing, it means that the severity of each crash has increased, and that is directly correlated to speed. It is the number-one sort of factor determining the outcomes of these crashes. So, for whatever reason, you've got a mix of things occurring, and, you know, I know we've, as I've been, we had a discussion at the city council, and we've discussed here before, there's an idea that somehow we can enforce and educate our way out of this problem, because it's really about individual behavior. And I would just say that not all of the "es" are created equal. And where we have invested in engineering solutions is where we have had the most profound, long-lasting, and permanent solutions. And Hollywood and Highland is the best example of those. You had an injury or a death happening once a month in that intersection before we put in the scramble, and now, we've had zero over the last year and a half. So, we know that design changes outcomes, and, you know, even if it's a mix of those four factors, we have the tools to overcome them through design.
Now, one, maybe a fifth factor, just completely anecdotally that I've noticed, and I've noticed it more in certain locations, is pedestrians crossing the way they used to in Boston 40 years ago, but they didn't here, which is, they'll cross on red lights, they'll cross on red lights with traffic coming at them at 30, 35 miles an hour, they'll do it without looking, and they'll even do it while looking at their devices. Are we taking that into account at all, and how much could that possibly be responsible? And what could we do to address that, especially when it tends to be in certain locations near hotels, people from other countries are less aware of our rules, and more willing to do that, et cetera?
I know it's tempting to sort of think that if we could just make everybody behave, we could get a better outcome. And it is absolutely true that if everybody obeyed every traffic law, and every signal, and every piece of paint, and every sign that we put out there, we'd have almost zero severe or fatal crashes. But we designed our system without taking into consideration that we are human, which means, number one, we're vulnerable, and number two, we make mistakes. So, the best way, and what is new about Vision Zero, is instead of designing our streets to try and move as many cars as quickly as possible, which is really the governing paradigm for engineering design in this country for the last 50 years, let's see if we can design knowing that people will make mistakes. And that's a different toolbox that really gets to reducing the overall speed of the system, so that when people make mistakes, when somebody steps out into the street, when, you know, I'm driving and I turn around to keep my kids from killing each other in the backseat, and something happens, it's not fatal, because the system is operating at a safer speed. So, education and engineering are 1,000% part of our strategy. We're investing $1 million in an educational campaign directed at these corridors. We're working closely with LAPD to think about smart enforcement strategies that target the real causes of crashes and do not criminalize biking and walking. But engineering is, it trumps all of those things. And so, we have to lead with infrastructure, and then solidify that with education and enforcement, and not the other way around.
So, are we doing anything to look at the issue that I raised?
Yes, absolutely. That's part of the detailed analysis that we do, and we identify those trouble spots where we're seeing pedestrians crossing. The other issue is that there are a lot of legal, unmarked crosswalks at mid-block locations, and there's confusion about the law. And so, we're, we have a legislative strategy, which the council voted on to endorse last week, that tries to get at changing the law itself to help us enforce the dangerous behavior. So, there's a legislative strategy here as well. But yes, to answer, short answer to your question is yes. We're looking at that, and those will be the sort of laser-focused interventions that we do along the corridors, one size doesn't fit all.
And I know we're obviously going to increase the initial funding that we gave to Vision Zero, because I don't think we should look at that as, oh, this is what we're doing now. It's more, we just started the program. So, my question is, does funding for Vision Zero, which clearly needs to be increased, does it have to come from here? Or could it come from other places in the budget, including the general fund, and some of this money be directed differently?
I guess that's a question for the I guess that's a question for the budget and finance and for the City Council as you contemplate the city's budget. I would make the same argument about resurfacing and just say that, you know, last year, I think we took Measure R, which we haven't really discussed here, but Measure R will continue probably to fund resurfacing, $25 million or something last year on resurfacing from Measure R. You know, having a stable, dedicated funding stream will really allow us to get into a planned state of being around Vision Zero. And I think the best place to pull that from is Measure M because it also makes good on a promise to the voters.
And I find appealing the idea of being able to have a certain amount of money in each council district because we'd have a little bit more control over how it's spent, presumably, if we structure it that way. For me, in terms of street resurfacing, my priority for years has been alleys because traffic is so tight in much of my district that the alleys are a much more functional part of the street system. And yet, we have alleys that are in so much worse shape than any of our streets. There are some that are akin to a waiting pool, where you'll have a two-foot drop and you'll have a 25-foot circular waiting pool. If you had anything like that in a street, people would scream and yell, and it would be fixed immediately. But these are used as streets, and pedestrians trip over them, bicyclists fall from them, motorcyclists fall harder. And it also is less of a street alternative when some of these are in horrible shape. For me, the enemy is really metrics. The mayor's office wants to hit certain metrics. So if I was able to say, for a couple of years, I get half the money that is used to fix streets in my district and put it in alleys, I'd be fine. But since I have no ability to control that, if we did this by district, I'd pull some of that money out and use it to fix alleys. So some of it is a more practical way to actually have a say in how your money's spent and what the greatest needs are in your district. So if there are a way to do that with not going through this process, it would be less of a focus for me. But I know we could structure this so a certain amount of money went to each district, and the council offices had a high amount of say in how to spend that. So certainly one thing I would be thinking about. In terms of money for bicycle lanes, I'm not sure where I heard this, whether it was from the department or elsewhere, but the bicycle lanes in some ways have contributed, I've heard, to some increased accidents because we do the engineering and we paint the lines, but we don't necessarily fix the route. So we're actually encouraging people to rely on those streets, and then they hit bumps and injure themselves. So certainly, if we added 10% for bikes, I wouldn't want to just stripe more bike lanes. I want us to, certainly at least going forward, if not going backward, have that money go towards safe bike lanes, where we did the striping, we did the engineering, and we made sure those routes were safe.
That's what it is.
And so even if you covered half as much space as we've been covering, we would cover it more intelligently and contribute to fewer accidents.
LEDOT and BSS did put forward a budget request to address exactly that issue. And so we have a pretty good handle on what we think it would cost to just do a constant, you know, review and care and maintenance of the network that we have today to make sure that we're not creating divots where you can get your wheel caught and have a crash.
And I'm pretty sure we have done some of that, so we obviously have to correct that.
Going forward, we've taken that into account, and we don't engage in that practice where we just sort of put a lane out there without taking under advisement and fixing the underlying pavement condition in the lane. But we have a huge network that, you know, we need to constantly be going back and smoothing over.
Mr. Smith, was there something you wanted to add?
I think what this hearing shows is that the city is replete with tricky policy questions that need attention. And our report was looking at one of those tricky problems. And as you go forward on it with the proposal, you hear other voices speak, and they all have these immensely crucial problems that need to be resolved. So as staff, we're here to help you find solutions. And if you want to move on different directions, we're here to help you to achieve those goals.
Thank you. I should note, in my experience, I've had some ability to redirect street resurfacing money within my district. When I first took office, people in Mar Vista said they really wanted the alley near the Mar Vista Farmers Market paved. And I figured out how much money Mar Vista generally would get in street resurfacing. And I said to the community council, if you would prefer me to shave the cost of this alley off the top, we'll do fewer streets. And they said yes, so we redid the alley that way.
Yeah, I think I've had less ability to do that. So, I mean, we get one or two a year, but we probably have many miles that desperately need to be done. So if I had a greater ability to do that, that would change my perspective on some of this. Also, on sidewalks, it seems like we have a huge amount of money, much more than we would ever allocate through Measure M, for sidewalks right now. We have an ironclad commitment that's only going to be increasing. So my question on that is, could we not direct that part of the money that we have to spend on sidewalks regardless go to Vision Zero purposes?
From a CLA perspective, the sidewalk program is a direct result of a settlement. Litigants have essentially set forth what we can and cannot spend our money on. And it's a narrow band, but sidewalks, intersections, trees are part of those expenses. Now, whether or not we can expand that to other areas, we'd have to go back and take a look at and see if that would not violate our understanding of the Willett settlement.
Ms. Reynolds, did you have something you wanted to add on that?
Just that the sidewalk program is essential, but the sidewalk program really addresses walkability. Smoothing out a sidewalk is not going to get you to Vision Zero. It's not going to reduce the traffic crashes that occur. It may reduce trip-and-fall injuries that happen, which are important for us to think about. But the sidewalk program, there's a way to think about it. If you were able to include curb extensions and median islands as a part of it, and if you did it as part of a total street reconstruction along a high-injury corridor, you might be able to get more out of it. But it, by itself, just smoothing over a sidewalk is not going to prevent a severe or fatal crash or the lion's share of them that we see because there's not a correlation.
But we could do some of what you've described and use some of that sidewalk repair money as part of that process, I presume.
Councilmember, if I may, the Willett settlement is really about mobility for those that are mobility-challenged, and that's really the focus of sidewalk repair under that program is providing the freedom for those that don't have it because of our sidewalk infrastructure. So to the extent that that overlaps with the high-injury network, it's very possible to do that. But I think the two programs are separate and different. They have different purposes, and for that reason, they would probably start and prioritize different areas naturally. But if there is a natural overlap that occurs from those priorities, then we could definitely talk. But Salida's could be focused.
I think we should be looking at that because I understand the difference.
We are.
But I don't think it's that tight, and I think it will help everybody's access when we put in new sidewalks, even if part of the effort is to address traffic accidents.
There's no doubt that accessible sidewalks are a safe pedestrian facility, but the way that we distribute the work or prioritize the work under the sidewalk repair program really derives from the needs of our mobility-challenged constituents. And so that's a slightly different approach than the one Ms. Reynolds is using. They're both extremely important, but...
There's synergies, and we coordinate. LEDOT and BOE have worked closely on figuring out ways to leverage what you're addressing.
Yeah, I'm not sure where we go from this. I don't necessarily totally agree with the just-repair-streets approach. I'm not sure I'd pick exactly the allocations that were proposed by our chair, although I like some of them. So I'm not sure how we approach this intelligently and come up with a proposal that we all can agree on.
Councilmember, if you don't mind, I'd like to just reiterate for you that the joint CAO/CLA report is not just about repairing streets. It's about finding a balance between all the different demands that we have. It has a significant street component to it, but it's not about just streets.
No, I realize that.
We are strong supporters of Vision Zero, and we've let Salida know that. And there is a component of the recommendation that would support that regardless.
Okay, so what we're going to do here is, we're going to hear from the other two members of the committee, and then we will see where the votes are on the CAO recommendation or on my alternative, or if either of those fail, or both of those fail, if there's some other alternative or some amendment that folks want to make. And for those keeping score at home, I'm told that the Sacramento proposal is out for $5.2 billion for transportation and roads. So that's some good news. Mr. Weisar.
Mr. Ru.
Mr. Ru.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, you know, the passage of Measure M was monumental for us. And with these funds, will have a, give us the incredible opportunity to enhance our city's infrastructure, you know, by increasing transportation options, enhancing commuter experience, bolstering public safety and the quality of life in our neighborhoods, and fixing our roads. So it's very, very important that we get this right, and I really want to thank the CAO and the CLA for your work on this report. And I'm very pleased with the report. However, I do agree with the need to earmark for Vision Zero. And, you know, just in my district alone, I'm always constantly trying to, when I meet with the community, trying to make sure we install additional stop signs, speed bumps, extra lighting, continental crosswalks, whatever it is to help improve pedestrian safety and traffic mobility. And, you know, I also have one of the few road diets, the Rowena Road Diet in my district, which we're monitoring closely with the Department of Transportation on its effectiveness. So I fully agree with the need for earmarking for Vision Zero. But, you know, as Councilman Bloomingfield's office stated before as well, and I think Councilman Corretts also mentioned, you know, as a city, we also made promises to voters to come up with a plan to repair DNF streets, which is very important to the road users and to all road users. For example, in Sherman Oaks alone, one of the number-one reasons that voters there voted for Measure M was for street repair. But I also agree that we should prioritize those fixes on the high-collision corridors. So I'm trying to figure out if there's a middle ground.
Well, there are, actually, we looked into that because I thought about that before we came here, and there's actually very little overlap between the DNF streets and the high-injury network. Most of the DNF streets are residential areas, and most of the high-injury networks are on our major arterials. So there's not very much overlap at all.
Oh, no, thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, I wasn't meaning the overlap between the DNF streets and the high-injury networks, but I'm trying to figure out how we could compromise between your proposal as well as the CAO/CLA's report. So I was wondering if possibly, if I can make a recommendation or an amendment to add Recommendation 5 to the report, to read, "Adopt the policy to designate 30% of Measure M local return revenues for accomplishing goals laid out by the Vision Zero and Mobility 2020 plans, subject to annual approval and prioritized as follows. A) Improving the safety of as many high-injury network intersections as possible in a short timeframe as possible. B) Focus on crosswalks, new signalized intersections and sidewalk repair. And C) Distribute the funds for repair as equally as possible across the city, based on traffic fatalities, injuries, and street inclusion in the high-injury network."
You are certainly welcome to make that motion, but I wouldn't accept it as a friendly amendment.
Did you say 30% or 20%?
30, 30%.
It actually...
Oh, yeah, that was just a working draft.
Oh, so you meant 30%?
Yeah, 30.
I actually think it...
Just the one, just the one, and not the anything else, just that one.
I'll second that motion, at least for purposes of discussion.
So for me, it's not a friendly amendment. I think it actually contradicts some of what's stated rather than sort of strikes a balance.
And just to clarify, I mean, it wouldn't be an amendment to yours, it would be an amendment to the report as presented to our committee. So, because I know the report in the committee has recommendations, so it's adding to the report.
So it would be approving the CAO report with that recommendation?
With that recommendation, hopefully as a middle ground.
Okay, all right. I'd be a no vote on that, but that's on the floor then.
Do you want to talk for the vote?
Oh, no, I think Councilman Weisar wants to speak as well.
Does he?
Well, I'm sorry.
I'm more than ready. It's been two hours.
Yes, you do.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. I have a few questions on your proposal, Mr. Bonn, and I'm not sure who could answer these, but on the designate 10% of Measure M local return for sidewalk repair and reconstruction on Vision Zero high-injury network project orders, wouldn't that be included in the 60%? Why was that separate from the 60%? Or why would we need to put those separately?
My understanding was that there was a desire on the part of the chair and also many of the folks you've heard from here today to accelerate the $30 million sidewalk program that's already going toward, that the city is obligated to do. So it's a way of earmarking very specifically sidewalk enhancements so that that 60% doesn't carry the burden of concrete work, which is also, which is usually the most expensive part of the work. So it would accomplish two goals. One, it would help that 60% go farther towards the actual improvements that will reduce the severity and fatality of the crashes, which are really curb-to-curb improvements and signals. And second, accelerate the city's sort of sidewalk repair program citywide.
Okay. So accelerate it. Yeah, another way of looking at this, and I assume you're going to do this in whatever funding you get from this, is you have projects that some are shovel-ready, some have matching grants, some of those can take priority for others, right? Because we find in our district, for example, we're getting metro grants, we're getting state grants, and we're scrambling around trying to find some money to improve some transportation project in our district, and that money's very difficult to find. So is there some, I mean, what do you think about any proposal with Measure M allocation local return to have a pot of money ready so that, hey, there's some money there, let's leverage, you know, another project that's 80% funded and just needs the additional 20%?
Yeah, no, and the department, DOT has been very successful at leveraging outside dollars. And with the money we get, we usually get three to one, sometimes up to nine to one, dollar-for-dollar return. So that would be part of our thinking and strategy anyway, is taking whatever funding that comes to these programs and trying to leverage the heck out of it to bring in outside funding. I would consider that as more of a prioritization criteria inside these buckets than a standalone. But having said that, you know, it would be certainly, you know, fine to put a little bucket over here that is really meant to be leveraging dollars. We have that in Measure R, right? We have a 5% and 5% set aside for bike and ped projects, and we use that money to leverage outside dollars and bring in ATP money and all kinds of other things.
Okay, great. And how are we doing in funding our bicycle infrastructure master plan or framework that we have?
I would say it's going in drips rather than a fully turned-on faucet. Again, there's the 5% set aside in Measure R, along with something called Transportation Development Act Article III money. Those are really our main sources for leveraging outside dollars to fund the build-out of the bike network and the mobility plan. It's a very small revenue stream, and because it relies so heavily on outside funding, it kind of goes like this. And it has to take into account and accomplish everything from bike parking to bike sharing to bike lanes. So we spread that around like peanut butter, and it gets really thin really quickly.
That's right. And so do we have a timeframe for implementing that master plan?
No, I mean, the Mobility Plan 2035 has a 2035 horizon year, but we don't have a capital plan or a CIP associated with the Mobility Plan.
The need in funding, desperately.
Correct, desperately.
Thank you. Well, thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, you had me at hello when you presented this proposal. I think that, I'm very, I'm just thrilled that we're having this conversation because a few years ago, the city of Los Angeles wouldn't be talking about Vision Zero and how we take into account other people who use the roads. And like Salida said, our transportation planning, not only in the city but throughout the country, has been about... the country, has been about how do we get a vehicle as quickly as possible through our streets? And we've got to change that. There are other people that are using that road as well. That's why the Mobility Plan took that into account. And it's counting trips, not only in vehicle trips now, but it's counting trips on walking, on bicycling, and that's been creative. I mean, we are nationally recognized for adopting that Mobility Plan, and we've got to now fund it and make sure that we have programs such as Vision Zero in place to help implement that portion of our city's master plan. So I'm very excited that we have before us a proposal that Mike has proposed. You know, and even before this, I've seen the positive effects. In Colorado, one of the speakers mentioned, Hillary mentioned how we put in a road diet and we put in some bicycle infrastructure, some Vision Zero concepts were implemented at that time. We didn't call them that. But, you know, we've seen a 42% less collisions in that road with only a two mile per hour less per travel time for a vehicle, so that I'll take that trade-off any day. And I think that's the idea behind Vision Zero. That's the idea that, we haven't counted less number of deaths, but I think there, we haven't seen any since, but thank God. But, you know, I think the indicators have shown us in those areas where we've implemented these types of ideas and concepts, that they're working. There's less deaths, there's more traffic calming. You know, our businesses are booming in those quarters because people slowed down a bit and noticed all these. So all those great things that are outcomes of this, I think we've got to start moving in that direction, not to mention that our city's master plan, our planning document through our Mobility Plan element is calling for that, and we've got to start funding that. So, Mr. Bonin, I support your proposal, and I'd like to move your proposal. If there's a, I assume you'll second, you can move it if you want to as well.
No, you can move it. And Ms. Martinez, is there a second?
I just want to move.
Okay. That's a second.
Mr. Chair?
Let me just procedurally, procedurally, what I would just like to recommend on that, before we go to Mr. Corretts, is that we, just to be clear, that also would mean we're noting and filing the motions and the CAO report. And we should also direct DOT and Bureau of Street Services to come up with a work program for all the stuff we've talked about so that the committee can then hear more about it. So there are two motions, I'll get you in just a second, Mr. Corretts. There's two motions on the floor. My understanding of parliamentary procedure is the most recent motion is the one that gets voted on first. So we'll go to a vote. Mr. Weisar's motion to approve my proposal and for discussion on that, Mr. Corretts.
Actually, to backtrack if I can, I wanted to make a friendly amendment to an unfriendly amendment and add to Mr. Rue's proposal that we take Item Four from Mr. Bonin's proposal, the 10% for upgrade and expansion of bicycle infrastructure to what I think is an attempt at a compromise.
Okay, so that's noted for the Rue proposal.
Do I need a second from?
Well, I would accept, but actually, we would have to amend that a little bit because to do the math. Because, I mean, I wish there was more money, but the CAO/CLA report said two-thirds going towards infrastructure repair, so that's 66% plus 30% makes 96, so adding the 10 will make 106.
Yeah, I'd subtract the 10% from the infrastructure repair.
So it would have to be 60, 30, 10 then, I'm assuming.
Yeah.
So, so I mean, because, and I think the chair's proposal is an amazing proposal, but I just, I committed to my voters in my district that, you know, when I was pushing for Measure M, that a portion of these funds will be used for street, DNF repair streets. So, I mean, I made a commitment to my voters in my district, and I just feel that the proposal has nothing for DNF streets. So that's why I'm trying to figure out the friendly amendment, and I accept Paul Krikorian, so I guess it would have to be...
Corretts.
Corretts, I apologize. I've been doing this all day today.
Gosh, that's never happened to me before. Okay, so the speaker and the governor, I think, have some money for the DNF, I hope. So let's vote on Mr. Weisar's motion for my proposal. Mr. Weisar?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
No.
Ms. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Corretts?
No.
And for those of you in suspense, I'm going to be voting yes on my proposal. So that approves that, that receives and files the CAO report, and given the precise language to the clerk. So that dispenses with Items 11 and 12. We have a number of other items on the agenda. I was going to recommend they all go on, yes. Okay, let me give a special shout-out to Trust South LA. For some reason, we didn't receive your cards. Want to thank you for coming down today. And I'll give you an opportunity to speak if you want to make general public comment in just a minute. So we're done with Items 11 and 12. We have, I'm going to recommend everything else go on consent. And before we can vote on the consent items, we have three minutes from, Mr. Herman's already gone. We have, Ms. Ramirez, you have two minutes, and Louis, you have two minutes.
Thank you very much. I will consolidate Items Number One, Three, and Four. Excuse me. Yes, they are. Yeah, these are, these restricted oversized vehicles are a breeding ground for high concealed crimes such as prostitution, drug weapon sales, gang and wetback jungle meeting areas, human trafficking hub areas, out-of-vehicles, fugitive hideouts, stolen property drop areas, areas where a lot of young innocent teens are introduced to sex and drugs and a destroyed and ravaged life. And Number, I'd like to go into, I'd like to go ahead and go also in preferential treatment or preferential parking. Give notice and dates and times and tell the people when they are allowed to park there and if there's any fines or penalties. Let's be civilized again and let us put these notices everywhere where they're visibly seen, where people do not accrue any kind of penalties or fines. Let's be civilized for crying out loud. Let's start, let's do things in a friendly manner. And I guess, do I have public comments now?
Yeah, you have 45 seconds left.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought, I'm sorry, I thought they were going to give me the notice.
Go for it.
Can I, can I have my one minute, please?
Forty seconds.
God bless Donald Trump and Jefe, who will decrease crimes in transportation across America by deporting these goddamn gangbangers and wetbacks and all the other domestic terrorists. Transportation, trains, buses, and taxis are carriers of highly contagious lethal diseases such as MRSA, bedbugs, scabies, staph infections, especially in overcrowded conditions. You are susceptible to meningitis, encephalitis, TB, whooping cough, and all the others. Thirdly, it's a crying shame that in America, we have to wait over one hour for buses, while in Tijuana, you get five minutes and they start rolling out. Even though they are substandard, they still roll out in five minutes. God damn it, get some decent buses every 15 minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Mr. Backstrom, for Item 10, you were saying that's receive and file? Okay, so the direction of the committee on the consent items will be to approve one through nine and to receive and file Item Number 10. That concludes the agenda with the exception of general public comment. Mr. Wright?
Do I have a minute or another? One minute. Regarding the city-state legislative strategy for Vision Zero, the Vision Zero goals will be much more quickly met if the state will incent or mandate, with substantial support by our city, that every car insurance company in California offer and robustly promote lower-cost telematics and/or vehicle onboard recorder-enabled pay-how-you-drive car insurance that rewards with lower rates drivers who demonstrate consistent lower speed, less aggressive, lower acceleration, less sudden braking, and more moderate and safe driving behaviors. Outcomes will include fewer and less severe collisions, lower carbon emissions from increased efficiency, and greater economic justice in car insurance costs, as good and safer drivers will pay less and dangerous aggressive drivers will pay more. Decreased vehicle noise pollution for transit users, pedestrians, and residents of arterials will be another positive outcome, working with the state to make illegal and...
Thank you very much.
Pay how you drive, make it happen.
Thank you. And there's nobody here from Trust for South LA anymore? I want to give you an opportunity to speak for the record if you'd like. All right, my apologies for that. So with that, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.